They talk about you cheering and loud, being loud and bringing your children there. And they talk about them being excited to see that somebody is supporting them. I appreciate that. Mr. Weber's always there, too. I appreciate that as you are, one thing about leadership is that if you are a leader and it stops with you, then you are not a good leader. But it goes and matriculates down to the building. So at Wayne Memorial, that's my evidence there. At Franklin, Franklin has created, and I was not happy about Franklin when my daughter went there. I appreciate Mr. Kentay Rosser, Dr. Jenkins, who works with my daughter. Not only have they just kind of embraced her, but those pillars of success are phenomenal. And if you have not gone to that school to see it, you have to look at how students are now being encouraged to take their learning and their ownership, taking ownership of their learning. Not only do they, like he said about Alvin Ailey, exposure, right? Exposure, not just that, but going to, hearing students talk about college, students talk about career choices. All of those things, that's community engagement, because our students are not going to just be in those four walls. So thank you again, Dr. Holt, under your leadership. That's community. And then at me, excuse me, at David Hicks, Ms. G understood that Robert was getting on the wrong bus. And she called, and she made sure that my son got to where he needed to go. She understood that it was my weekend, not his father's week. Community engagement. One of the things that I am so excited and proud of is that my students can come in, they can talk about bumping into Dr. Holt inside the office. And she greeting him, saying, "How are you doing today?" Leah is one of my, she's my challenge baby, right? I love that when she saw you one day, she was on her way to Dr. Jenkins' office to get in trouble, and you stopped her and you asked her, "How are you doing today?" And so as a young lady that's 12 years old, six feet tall, that sometimes no one asks her that. She may be talked about or whatever, but you stopped and you asked her, "How are you doing?" That's community engagement. Not only did you galvanize your school and the community, but you galvanized the citizens to pass a millet that is going to go to support our young people. And so again, I thank you for your community engagement. You're not in the office, you're not just hiding, but you all are very, very visible. I love that my son can't wait to see the next snow day video. My children, my children were excited, and I really, even with the Momo challenge, I appreciate, because my district didn't really do anything. But you got on there and you talked about it, not only as an administrator, but as a parent, that we are, how you were going to address this situation. So thank you for your community engagement. I appreciate you for keeping us in the loop. I appreciate all that you and your staff are doing. We are doing champs at my school, we're doing SEL, and we are also door restorative practices, and it does work. But that comes from an innovative leader who sees the need and not just wants to suspend a child for what they are not doing, right? We know that children don't show up to school to act up, but it's either to escape the task or to be removed from their environment. And if we can understand that, that means let me help this child, because they don't want the world to know that they can't read, but they don't mind talking to a teacher crazy, right? And so if we understand that, if we can get, if we can get that, you know, through to our kids and educate them, we will be doing just fine. So again, thank you for all that you're doing. We stand behind you, we support you, and I appreciate your leadership.
Well, I'd just like to state for the record that that was not on an agenda item, but we'll take it. So thank you very much. On agenda items, does anyone have something to add? Seeing no one, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, item 255.19. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell. Support. Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not present. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Next item on our agenda, 256.19, is Board of Education Committee reports. Mrs. Madell, Policy Committee?
And I don't have the notes. Are they in the?
We've got some notes here for you.
Okay, thank you.
We got you.
Okay, not a problem. All right, this is the Policy Committee meeting. The members that were present were Melanie Hines, myself, Mr. Buckaloo, who was substituting for Mr. Weaver, Dr. Weaver, excuse me. Staff present was Dr. Shelley Holt, Jill Simmons, Assistant Superintendent, Tamara Phoenix, Administrative Assistant. The Policy Committee met and discussed the board member brochure and how it would be distributed and where. Discussion and review continued over the updated policies that were sent over by Lusk Albertson for February 2018 and November 2018. There will be an administrative regulation guideline created to outline more of a student appearance regulation. Also discussed was an administrative regulation for after events when students didn't take the bus, private transportation, that will release district from any liabilities. The committee also inquired about getting an administrative regulations for surveillance on school sites, also creating an administrative regulation for community members when they want to use school facilities and they have not been fingerprinted. Committee members discussed Board Book, an electronic agenda program that eventually will alleviate board packets that are currently delivered to board member homes. Review and update of the board operating procedure was discussed and how the process will proceed. The meeting was adjourned at 8:24 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Any discussion on the Policy Committee report? Hearing none, we'll move to 257.19 on the Agenda Review and Approval of Human Resource Items. Ms. Simmons?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I present for your review and approval, our new Director of Finance, Mr. Devin Kling. If you turn to page 31, you'll see his data sheet. I can share that Mr. Kling possesses an associate of business from St. Clair County Community College, a Bachelor of Business Administration with a major in finance from Walsh College, and is pursuing a Master's of Education in K-12 Educational Leadership from Michigan State University. Mr. Kling comes to us most recently as the Finance Director for Memphis Community Schools.
Thank you very much. Sir, do you have a few comments of greeting for us this evening?
Yeah, you want me to say here or up there?
Just let's see if we have a motion. Does anybody like to officially?
So moved.
Mrs. Madell, and support by Ms. Hines. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
I vote yes and welcome. Can I welcome a few comments from you, right here?
All right, okay. Board, Dr. Holt and her administration team, and Wayne Westland community, I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I can't wait to get started to work for you guys and this community any way I can. I appreciate it.
We thank you. Welcome aboard. We wish you the best of luck. Okay, our next item on the agenda, subsection B, under 257.19, which is the update of our policy. We have several updates to our policy to address this evening. Update 5.04 on policy. Mr. Neal, do you want to read this?
Well, they have to choose between one of these two.
No, can I clarify that? Those are admin regs, and those should not have been in there. It's just the first paragraph at the bottom. You can scratch the.
Regarding pay rate? Okay. Okay, we're going to look for a motion on 5.04 policy. Do we hear, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Madell, supported by Hines. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Is there discussion on it?
I have one question.
Yes.
And I'm just looking for an approximate number. How many of our employees are going to be affected by this policy?
I don't have the exact number to give to you right now. It's a small percentage, because the majority of our employees are covered under collective bargaining agreements, which surpass the required amount.
Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Next item, 258.19, is Review and Approval of Business and Service Items, Finance Items. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am presenting for your review and approval the authorization of the issuance of the 2019 School Building and Site Bonds. This can be found on pages 32 to 51, and Mr. Jim Crowley is also here to speak on this issue this evening.
Motion?
So moved.
Second, Madell. Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Walker not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
A great enthusiasm, yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item 259.19 on the Agenda, our Board Policy Items. Mrs. Madell on 1000.03, the Amendment of our Bylaws, Section A, Placement. Do I hear a motion?
No, I was going to say, for brevity here, it's all written out for you. Any changes that have been made are in red, and you've had a chance to look over these and ask your questions if you had any before you came to the meeting. So for those of you who do not know, we have had this in our possession for several days, so we've had a chance to review this. We do not need to read through each one, we just need to vote on each one. So for that, I apologize.
Just for everybody that's listening, we have a rather confusing list of standard policy language changes from our attorney, and we're working through those numbers right now. And they are available in the Agenda for anybody that would like to review them, and we're going to address them by letter, beginning with A. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Neal, support. Ms. Hines, roll call vote on A.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not here. Mr. Cox?
Yes. 2000.06 on Behavior, Section B. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support.
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 2000.07 on Health and Safety, Section C. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell. Support by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Holt, is this the right number for? Okay. Okay, under Health and Safety, Section D, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Madell, supported by Weaver. Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
4000.05 on Other Matters of Employment. Section E, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by?
Second.
Mr. Buckaloo? Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section 5003 on Purchasing, Subsection F. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Madell, supported by Weaver. Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. On Section G, on Automatic Clearinghouse for Electronic Transfer of Funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support.
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. Is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section H, Federal Grants and Awards. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Weaver? Support?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Mr. Buckaloo, support. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section I, Land, Buildings, Facilities, and Real Estate. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell.
Support.
Support by Hines. Is there discussion? Roll call vote. Isn't this exciting?
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yep.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Item J, Equipment, Supplies, and Personal Property. Do I hear a motion? Madell?
Yep.
Support?
Second.
Mr. Buckaloo? Discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section 50010, Meal Charge, Food Service. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Weaver?
Second.
Second by Madell. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Item 50011, Summer Property Tax Levy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Madell, support by?
Support.
Mr. Neal? Discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Walker, oops, sorry, she's not here. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 50012, Fixed Assets. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support.
Second.
By Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Item 50013 on Online Fundraising. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support.
Second.
Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 50014 is School District Credit Cards. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Weaver, support.
Support.
Madell, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section 6000 dash or point oh one on Goal. Section P, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by Weaver. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes. By the way, we're doing this roll call instead of all at once, because we're missing a board member tonight. We don't want any confusion. Item 6005, Tobacco-Free Environment, Section Q. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Weaver, support by?
Second.
Madell, discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section R. Six. Yes, Section R, moved by Weaver, support by?
Madell.
Madell. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 6007 on Transportation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Weaver, support by Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section 6008, Recognition and Plaques. Motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by?
Second.
Mr. Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Section 60010, Surveillance in School District Buildings and Facilities. A motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support.
Support.
Support by Hines. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 7002, Community Use of School District Facilities. A motion?
So moved.
Moved by Weaver, support.
Support.
By Hines. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 70010, Solicitation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support by?
Second.
Buckaloo. Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Gee, this is the last one. 8008.06, Social Security Numbers. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Absolutely, yes. Next item on the Agenda, 260.19, is the Designation of the School Safety Liaison and Emergency Contact to the Attorney General Hotline. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President. The designation of a school safety liaison and emergency contact to the Attorney General Hotline. The new school safety laws require the creation of an Office of School Safety and a School Safety Commission within the Department of State Police. Public Act 549 of 2018 requires the school board to designate a liaison to work with both of these entities by March 28, 2019, per the resolution in the Agenda on page 52. This resolution also references the new legislation and requires school districts to provide emergency contact information for a school official to the Department of State Police for receiving information from this hotline. Tips received on the hotline are reviewed and analyzed by the Michigan State Police before they are passed on to the local police and the named school district official. A motion to approve the resolution as presented and waive the need to read the enclosed resolution is being requested. Our contact is designated as Mr. Mark Miller.
Magnificently presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Madell, support.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Neal. Is there discussion? I'd like to add that our superintendent was ahead of the curve on this. We already were doing that. So roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. 261.19, Mrs. Madell?
In front of you are several months' worth of financial, I apologize. We've had a small glitch at Head Start here, so you now have November, December, January, and February's report being presented to you.
Motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
By Mrs. Madell, support from?
Second.
Mr. Buckaloo, is there discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes. Two six two point one nine is the superintendent's report. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do want to give a couple of congrat- congratulatory remarks. First of all, I want to thank, um, and say congratulations to Mrs. Amy G. and Mrs. Kelly Michaels, two of our principals, who are, provided awards at the state and local level for their great work in our district. Mrs. G. is here with us, congratulations. So proud of you. And Mrs. Michaels received an award from her program. We have some of the most amazing administrators, and I had one more, Mrs. Kim Markey, who didn't make it here tonight. She is now an official holder of the MSBO voluntary certification, uh, program, and has earned a Business Office Specialist certification, so congratulations to her as well. I also want to thank a young lady who was with us, Mrs. Uh, Ms. Micah Andrews and her parents. Um, the reason for that is Micah was just, uh, accepted into the Interlochen Junior Arts Academy in Interlochen, Michigan. Fabulous. And while I never, ever, ever want to lose a baby in Wayne Westland, your mama knows exactly how much that is and what it means to me. But I am so thankful for you and your progress, so proud of you. You invite me to somebody's place, somewhere, okay? And I can't wait to see you just, uh, breaking legs everywhere. Go ahead and break a leg, baby. We have so many students who have gotten awards between our amazing bands, our ama- uh, our, uh, teams, um, our sports teams. Uh, there's too many to literally name, and it's already too late for us to do all of that, but check out our website, our, our Facebook pages and such, because we always celebrate our children. I also want to congratulate each and every one of our principals on completing their mid-year reviews. This is huge. A mid-year review is the time when each and every principal in every school site has to sit in front of me and the executive cabinet and many of our district officials, and really kind of talk about, what are you doing, how are you doing it, and am I going to see increases in student achievement, period, dot, end of story? That's what I want to know. Are we going to see the students move from here to here? And then slowly but surely, and I want progress, not perfection, not looking, uh, nobody's perfect, but we steadily need to make positive, productive academic progress. And as our stu- as our behaviors decrease, our student achievement will increase. We know that here in Wayne Westland. Um, I wasn't going to read the book to you, but it's too late. But I wanted, because March is reading month and women's month. Women's month and reading month, I had to celebrate this book I found, and as you know, I have, uh, three daughters, uh, three of the seven of my girl, uh, of my kids are girls. And my oldest just made it out here, I'm not sure if she's still here, um, is she out? There she is, I'm so proud of her, she just moved out here from California. Um, and as I was walking through, we were in, um, in the Children's Museum in Chicago, and I found this book by Chelsea Clinton. And in the opening, Chelsea Clinton talks about that throughout American history, there have always been women who have spoken out for what's right, even when they had to fight to be heard. In early two thousand seventeen, Senator Elizabeth Warren's refusal to be silenced in the Senate inspired a spontaneous celebration of women who persevered in the face of adversity. In this book, Chelsea Clinton celebrates thirteen American women who helped shape our country through their tenacity, sometimes through speaking out, sometimes by staying seated, sometimes by captivating an audience. They all certainly persisted. She persisted as for everyone who has ever wanted to speak up but has been told to quiet down. For everyone who has ever tried to reach for the stars but was told to sit down. And for everyone who has ever been made to feel unworthy or unimportant or small. With vivid, compelling art by Alexandra Bugeur, this book shows readers that no matter what obstacles may be in their path, they shouldn't give up on their dreams. Persistence is power. So I thank you for women's month. Finally, I'm not going to go over this, but, um, one of our board members, he asked me for a one-pager of everything that's going on. He's like, can we get it all on one page? We've got it all on one page. And so I thank you for that request, Mr. Buckaloo, because it really sparked our team to start to think through, how can we fit all of our work on one page? So I just showed this to you, I will go over it in future meetings, but we have our core values here, we have our mission, our vision. Um, we, our theory of action is a culture of excellence, a climate of excellence, and excellence in learning. And we also have our district-wide priorities, and you can see here our top ten in Michigan, top ten and ten Michigan goals. Basically, we need discipline to come down so that everything else can increase. Make sense? So as we conclude this month, I do want to say thank you to all of those who have, um, shown support to our kids and our students and our families. We know it's not easy, March really is madness, I don't know what is in the water. But I've never prayed so bad for April in my life. Um, it's been a, some, I don't know what's going on, but next week, enjoy your spring break, I will be taking a complete week off, leave, literally, I am putting the phone down for my husband's request. Um, so thank goodness the babies will not be in school and I can put it down, but I encourage all of our folks, you have to put your own mask on first to be able to take care of our children and our babies. You cannot, children in crisis are not going to be helped by adults in crisis. So it is up to us to make sure we have a work environment where everyone feels supported, everyone feels heard, everyone feels part of the Wayne Westland family. Thank you, that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Enjoy your vacation, Dr. Holt, you've earned it. Next item on the agenda, two six three point one nine, is citizens' comments, thank you so much for waiting. Any citizens that would like to address the board? We'd love to hear from you, sir.
I'd like to say good, good evening, uh, to Dr. Holt and to the board, just want to just echo the words that, uh, Ms. Ryan said, uh, everything I was wanting to say she says, so I'll just say amen to that. But I also want to simply say that with the excitement, um, as, as a leader of the community and Pastor John Duckworth, Pastor Kissimmee Baptist Church, the church in Westland, I wanted to say that, um, as a leader, I am often aware that when ne- leadership come in, there are often changes that takes place, and everyone does not embrace change. And so I want to know, uh, by way of question, I stated my support, but just a question to the board, um, how supportive are you of Dr. Holt? Because we have a gym, and we want to treat the gym correctly, and we want to treat the gym right, because we want to see everything keep going forward and not backwards. So that's my comment to the board.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Anyone else? Please? We got a...
Hello?
This young man, and then, uh...
Uh, my name is Jordan Holt, I'm the son of Dr. Holt. And, um, this week, it came to my knowledge that, uh, some teachers at Wayne Memorial High School had gone through my Twitter, and found a tweet that I said, and I quote, "If I'd found out what Wayne was like before I got here, I never would have moved here." These teachers have decided to contact the Board of Education and tell them that I'm speaking critically on the district. I would just like to reiterate that none of these teachers have come up to me and asked if I'm okay. We speak about restorative practices and PBIS and all this, but not one single teacher has come up to me saying, "Jordan, I saw your tweet, are you okay?" And it's just, it really fascinates me how all these teachers can claim to be for the students, but instead of helping the student, they try to take a direct attack on my mother instead of checking on me. And I would just, and I know that behind all this, everything is not okay in the district, and there is friction going on in between peoples and groups. But I would just like to state right here for everyone to hear, please leave me, my family, my brothers and my sisters alone. I don't want to be in your mess, I see what it has done to my mother and the stress she has caused, and I wish you wouldn't do it to her either. But I know she's strong, she's going to get through it. But yeah, please, leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Um, good evening, school board, um, superintendent, um, friends and family. Uh, my name is Will Miller, I am a resident of Inkster, Michigan. Um, I'm here today because, um, we've been in, uh, you know, we, a lot of us, we're out in the community constantly. Um, we're starting to hear some negative things, um, that's being, um, said and accused and with regard to our superintendent. Now, coming up, um, it's, it's an election year in the city of Inkster. I'm running in a district that's a hundred percent inside Wayne Westland School District. We got people coming to us saying that things, you know, after we just saw her and you guys and several, several of you guys, Ms. Hines, out in the street working for a bond initiative, you know, coming to people, asking them to support the school district, and we coming out in numbers, you can see it, I didn't came in here before and it was a third of this size, the rooms are filling up, people are coming out. But we're hearing that our superintendent, well, we thinking everything is going well with the work that she's done, she's embattled in this building. Things are going bad for her to the point where perhaps we may lose the gym that we found that's doing fantastic things for the school district. It concerns me greatly. What I need to ask of you guys is what is it, are you going to do to make sure that she's here, stays here? What are you doing to help her with her finance fight to keep this school district flow? Even though that bond initiative got passed, there are issues that need to continue to be fought with. What are you doing to make her job easier, to make our job easier for our children? I'm a, we're going to be here more often now, that, because this is something that came to us as a blind thing, we thought everything was great, we loved this woman, we come to find out, it's looking like people trying to get rid of her. Like, we saw this SEL thing, that was amazing to me. Amazing. And, I mean, to the point where the president was like, how long this been going on? My man was like, since two thousand and, you know? So i- i- it begs a question, it does, it's like, well, how come now, with such a huge move in the numbers, why is this happening now? We're going to be here more often, thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Hi, my name is, uh, Ray Shu-Holtson. And I was really, when I sat in here tonight, I thought I was, I was really impressed hearing about, you know, the most fake, the most thing is, everything needs to be inclusive in here, mental health. And I was really, really liked what I heard and watched the PowerPoint. And, uh, I think you're doing a good job, and I think we need to community exclusive, like you said, relationships in the schools. We didn't have that in the seventies and like they do now, and I think we need it. We all need it because, you know, people have been bullied during the years, I've been bullied before, I know what it feels like. So I want to see people and kids and high schools and, and all them having that relationship is, is very important. I know the superintendent, I seen, you've, you've been doing a lot, so. I'm really, really impressed, and you know what? I wanted to say something with the youth group assistance programs, I got an award. What that is, I speak at a youth group assistance program, talk about mental health, talk about how mental health has helped me in my life, it can help others, because you know what, it affects us all. It does affect us all. And you know, with one more thing, spirit giving, and that is what I have, and I have passion, I'm out there on the road, always making changes. Doesn't matter with a person with a disability, everybody to me is somebody, and we can learn from one another, thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, school board, my name is Yvonne Moore, and I live in Inkster. When our schools were dispersed and our children's was split all over everywhere, I had reservations about where my grandchildren were going to go. And it was really crazy. My daughter was a, my granddaughter was an all A student, my grandson's all A student. But I can truthfully say that my grandson has prospered, he's really went well, he attends Wayne Memorial High School. He's fantastic, we thought that he was going to lose, not be able to go into his band, he loves the drums, he's been playing them since he was two. And surprisingly, through Wayne Memorial, he's fantastic. I mean, he's A-one, he still kept his grades up, like right now, he's in percussion band, and they're going on, they're going to state. And I, I know some of you know in April, they're going for the world champions, they're going to Dayton, Ohio. And I mean, you know, I watched him not only learn the drums, he learned for other different instruments. So, um, on that note, I can truthfully say, him attending Wayne Westland Schools, I love it. Because when he went to, I'm just going to be truthful, when he went to the other school districts, they treated him like dirt. You know, and I'm just being truthful. So for him to go to Wayne Westland and my other, other grandsons going to Wayne Westland, they're twins, I see a, a little bit of, I see a little, as they say, a clear way down the tunnel. And I hope that this is going to continue, because our children are the future. Whether anybody in here knows it, everyone in here, we all getting older, but our kids are our future. You know, and if we don't look out for them, we don't have a future. So I wanted to let everybody know that if we keep encouraging them and keep letting them know that they can do it, no matter what, because you could suspend a child and put them out there, but if you suspend them and put them out there on the street, they don't have anything else but to do, what they gonna do? The street's going to take them, they gonna take them. So we have to find alternative, ulterior motives and something to give them to say, okay, I'm not going to put you out, I'm going to do this or I'm going to do that. So what I heard tonight, I loved. And that makes me more encouraging to let them know, to let my kids know and all the other kids know in Inkster, that you can go somewhere else where you can learn. You do not have to stick in the one spot. You don't have to stay in that, you have a choice, because our kids don't think that they have a choice, but they do. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Keith Williams, I am the Director of Recruiting for Wayne County Sheriff, I'm also the Chairman of the Michigan Democratic Party Black Caucus. Today I came out here, I do a lot of recruiting all through the Wayne County, I used to be a county commissioner, and I used to word serve with, uh, Kate Beard and a lot of those folks. And we had, we was a team, there was s- s- six African-Americans and, uh, and nine white folks, but we were a team, we worked together. And I'm very impressed with the leadership, I just, I heard about this, Miss Holt, and I had to come see it for myself. And so I'm here to support you, I'm here to support the school board because we can't live in silos anymore. We got to work together, we got to love together, instead of running away from each other, let's run towards each other, because it's our kids, this is about our kids. grown folks need to get out the way and let the experts do what they need to do to elevate our kids. And I have a saying, it's not how many steps you take, it's the quality of footprints we leave behind, and those are our children.
Read it, madam, superintendent, board members, I just want to address Dr. Holt. I know how it is when you try to do your best and you push to make a change. You got critics, you got clear haters. But I, I want you to continue to do what you do and don't let your feelings stop you from what you're doing. Continue with your mind and keep moving forward. Those old men told me one time, he said, "Son," he said, "Well, whether it's good or bad, if folks ain't talking about you, you ain't nothing on this earth."
Right.
So you must be doing something great. I want to say to the Westland School Board, I've been five times president in Inkster. Done the best I know how to do. And I see some of the same programs I tried to implement in Inkster, you're implementing. And I always said that give a young person a chance and they'll make a difference. I recall a lot of situations here in Westland, a whole lot of things have changed. I think Mayor Wilds, number one, and I think a lot of the people in the Westland School District and the Westland City, who joined in with a lot of folks in Inkster and made a difference. Let me say it's time out to think that you want to separate our children. Let me say something, we all was born. You may be white, I may be black, but if I take my knife and cut you, you going to bleed red.
Right.
And I want to say this, and that's the reason why you see all over the country a heart, and it's always red. Let me say this, without love, we can't do anything. Without love, we can't unite ourselves, and our children need us. Too bad they can't vote, because a lot of us wouldn't be in the position that we are. We understand, we had to protect them, you know, down the road. Okay, let, let me explain to you what I do when I'm going to sit down, okay? I have been a spiritual director in the, in, in, in Inkster for over forty-five years. That I have been counseling young men and young women, even on a suicide basis. Okay, I have volunteered my services over, going on fifty years now. Dealing with young people, ran Little League ball, ran basketball, you can name it, you, I just going down the line, other thing, youth counseling, wake up out my bed, go teach, uh, stop a kid from killing themselves. I've done all of that. Okay, and I'm the worst talked about person that you ever want to see. But guess what? I enjoy what I, because I know God got my back. It doesn't matter. You guys doing a good job, I heard that young man bring, where, where is he at, where he at, way around here, I'm, I'm just taking a look down, shouldn't take this much time, where he at? No, that, the assistant superintendent, that's where he was, where he at? You keep doing what you're doing. Okay, I, I sit there at the Minister Alliance meeting, yeah, I'm a preacher, and I seen how he broke down situations and, and, and what he's trying to do here in, in the Wayne Westland. You got, you got a great, you got a great plan. And Dr. Holt, you just keep it, don't worry about him, Dr. Holt, you understand? You got a lot of people that got your back in here, both black and white. And I, and I, and I, and I, and I want to say to this board and to the superintendent, never I thought I would see the day that both black and white moving together for the proper education of our children, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I'm not sure what's happening, but I'm, I'm sweating, and I'm just going to make it very clear. Um, whatever is happening needs to be fixed yesterday, um, because any bit of attack on this person is unbelievable. And I will tell you this much, if you think there's a teacher shortage and an administrative shortage, if she goes, tons of us will go, starting with me.
Thank you, anyone else? Thank you. We'll now move to the, uh, review and recommendations of the Board of Education, Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you. You may not have noticed, but we went through a number of policies today. I wish kept to the vote no on one, just to see if anyone was paying attention. Most of these things are going to go in the book and they're going to get forgotten. But if something goes wrong and that policy isn't there, we're going to regret it. And even though we flew through them when we voted on them, I can guarantee you that every one of us read them, gave them some thought before we came in here today. We were prepared to vote on these policies when we got here. So it may have sounded like nonsense, uh, in the final analysis, it was not. Uh, Dr. Townsend, I was so impressed with your presentation today. I think most of us know. Kids that don't learn, many times don't learn because they don't want to. And we can see that they don't want to... And we can see that they don't want to in the way that they, they act out in the class. And if, if we discipline those kids, if that's what we do to them when they act out, we're just gonna reinforce that bad behavior. Or sort of justice seems to be the way to go. We need to work with these young people. The program you're putting in place, I think is gonna have not just good citizenship kinds of results, but I think we're gonna be able to measure it in academics as well. I'm so pleased with the work that you're doing here, I truly am. And I'll share one more thing with you too. When I was a, a new board member and Dr. Berisi was our superintendent, I asked him quite seriously one time, what's the life expectancy of a building? And he looked at me like I was some kind of fool, which probably I was. He says, "It depends on how well you take care of it." Well, we just approved a bond in November, and today, we just authorized the issuance of those bonds. And that money is going to go to improve the existing facilities that we have, to upgrade them, to put this, this school district on a twenty-first century footing. And we're all going to benefit from that. It's going to cost us some money, obviously, as we go forward in the next twenty-five years. Some of us aren't gonna have to pay the whole twenty-five years. But it's for the best. Our kids are gonna benefit from it. That bond is probably the best thing that has happened to this school district in a long, long time. Many people have worked on it. I was a bit remiss earlier today. Dr. Holt worked tirelessly on getting that approved, and for that, I'm most thankful. So, those were the things I wanted to touch on today. I thank you very much. I apologize for the lateness of the hour.
Mrs. Medel?
One of the first coffee hours that I went to with the legislators in Inkster after the dissolution of the school district, I had a very nice lady in my face. And she, her thing was, "Are you loving on our babies?" And I said, "Honey, we love on all of our babies, so be assured, your baby is going to be loved on also." It was such a, a smooth transition. We only took in sixty-nine kids from the area, but we've got a lot of kids who have come to us since that time in school of choice. We've gotta be doing something right if they're coming to us. Dr. Townsend, you proved it today. We are going in the right direction. Coming out of the classroom, yes, it's been a few years now, but I knew we needed to do something when I was still there. What it was, I wasn't sure, but I knew that what we were doing wasn't getting us what we needed. Again, the definition of insanity. So, when Dr. Holt suggested that we, you know, go in this direction after what she had a chance to see what was going on and realizing that we hadn't really been addressing the changing population, I'm glad she recommended you for this position because you have proved your worth many times over. And I'm so glad that you shared this information out with everybody so that they know that we are addressing our issues in the classroom and trying to retain kids. Mr. Buckaloo and I have been going to leadership training that I know that the staff has been going through the process. And we were, got a chance to share out what we have changed in our district. And I was sharing all the things that we are doing in our district to help support our children, families, our employees, everybody. They were so impressed. And like you said, we are above the curve. And it gave them a chance to see what we're doing, it gave us a chance to see that, yeah, we are above the curve and we're going in the right direction. I love those aha moments, you know, where you're realizing, we're doing it, we just need to keep going and we need to get everybody rowing in the same direction. And one of the things I did share out with Heather, I think is the woman who is working with our school district, and we were discussing student discipline and I was reminded of one of my former sixth graders who I later found out had a mental illness diagnosed that was a little scary when I heard what it was. Because each day, this student would come in and ask me, "If I do this, what will happen to me?" Every single day, I would get a different question and I'm thinking, "Am I in a sci-fi movie dealing with a computer that's trying to find a way to get to me?" And I finally realized, the only thing I could change here was my response, and I started flipping it. "What would happen to you if you didn't do that?" He would walk away a little befuddled, but I didn't have another problem with that kid for the rest of the year. Because all I did was flip. And that's what this leadership program is showing us, that we need to flip here. We also had a chance to go to an M A S B training with Dr. Weaver and Mr. Cox. And again, they're impressed with what we are trying to do. We just need to make sure that we work a little harder to get everything done. I wanna shout out to John Glenn High School. Their spring play, Footloose, was just this last week. The kids did an excellent job. In fact, uh, Groves. Chase. I wanted to say, I wanted to say his brother's name and I knew it wasn't. He's, he's gone. And were you in part of that too? Excellent job. Very good. And knowing that Wayne High is coming up in April, you lost your shot there. When you were up there, you should've put in a pitch for it. April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, they are doing Sister Act. Tickets are available. So, come out and see what our kids can do with this. Yes, we won't have Whoopi Goldberg there, but I'm sure we have equal talent. So, come on out. Open enrollment right now for Head Start, so if you qualify, please take a look at our program. We've got a good program. I call it our farm camp for our school district, where we have several preschool programs that we offer. But I'm personally passionate for Head Start. Our Family Resource Center has a lot of things available to parents and students. If you have a problem, all you, we have three different centers going. All you have to do is contact them, they will show you in the right direction if they can't help them yourselves. But we have a lot of things available. Our community organizations meet at the F R C and share out what they've got coming up. Things during spring break that the kids can get involved in instead of staying home and playing video games and watching TV. So, a lot of things are available. Just call the F R, uh, Family Resource Center and find out. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Neal?
Yes, Dr. Townsend, thank you so much for the presentation. I think what I enjoyed most was the way you really made it real by highlighting four schools, so we could see real numbers and real progress. Great credit to you and to Dr. Holt, who instituted these programs and made sure that our schools get on the road to improvement. It's very evident that this is making a difference. The, one thing I wanted to address, a question was thrown, or a comment was thrown out about the President asking about how long the program had been in effect and so on. I, I don't know if anybody knew how we were using that question or where it came from, but just before the meeting, we talked about the use of that little program, not having seen it before. And Dr. Holt suggested that we could select a question or two that was being presented by you in the audience. And that question was one that somebody had written and the President asked the question. So, at least one of the questions you all had asked would be asked, so that other people could hear as well. As far as Dr. Holt, she has great support in the community. And I should tell you, she also has great support on the board. I, I want you to know, I mean, I've announced and I, I heard others say the same thing, that we support Dr. Holt in everything she's trying to accomplish. If she succeeds, we all succeed. And here's one thing that might help, might help you understand. In her contract, she has an evergreen clause, which means that essentially, if we don't do something, like give her a letter saying we're not gonna renew her contract, then her contract adds on another year. Well, lo and behold, that meeting would've had been today. You didn't hear us say anything about not renewing her contract, so her contract just added on another year. So, the point here being that there's no one here talking about eliminating our wonderful director. I think she's put a lot of programs in place and we can tell by the presentation just given here tonight, that the fruition of those programs is making itself evident, that you can see what's happening, and it's a positive thing. And I expect that student scores will follow close behind everything else that's going on. Apparently, according to your presentation, it's already beginning to show itself. So, great credit to our doctor, our superintendent, and the programs that she's instituted, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Madam Vice President?
Okay, well, I liked that presentation, Dr. Townsend, it was awesome. Me and Dr. Holt was talking about like on Facebook, how they had the media, uh, yoga and different type of things. Because like you were saying before, if the kids are suspended, they're not learning. They're not gonna pass. So, that's very important that we look at that, even with mental illness. Like I've known kids that are wonderful kids, but they fight because they don't have medication, you know? So, I'm really glad that you guys are helping. Like I said, I've been a part of this district. I grew up in Inkster, went to Wayne Westland, so I was able to, you know, really have a deep, uh, ground into the community. But one thing that does, it does bother me, there's wonderful things happening in this district, but there are some negative factors that we have to overcome. At the end of the day, people can't get caught up in titles, race, positions, it's all about the kids. We are here to serve the kids. And we have to, at the end of the day, get out of ourselves, no matter, we have to respect each other. Even if we don't like each other, we must respect each other. We must communicate and we have to rebuild the trust because the trust has been broken. So, like I said, in order for us to move forward, Dr. Holt, you are a gem. I remember going out to the churches when we were working for the bond. I remember on election night, we were at the polls, we had our own strategic plan to get that bond passed. Because the scary thing is, it was, almost didn't pass. I mean, it was really fearful. So, I am so glad, twenty years later, graduating from Wayne More, the community is coming together as a whole. And my child is in the district, so I want him to succeed as well. And Dr. Holt, last Saturday, was on a radio station being a cheerleader for our district. She could've been with her family. She was out promoting the district. So, I'd like to say everyone, like, hopefully, we can get this together, but we do need to give MSAB, do some type of coaching, counseling, whatever we need to do to kinda get this trust, communication back together because we cannot fail our children.
Thank you, Melody. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Kling. Now, I'm old, feeble, and I can't see very well, but are you about thirteen or fourteen years old now? I mean, you look really young from where I'm looking here, so. You don't need to answer that. Okay, yeah, exactly, exactly. Welcome to the district. Dr. Townsend, I thought your presentation was awesome. Twenty-four percent reduction district-wide in, in fighting and assaults, things of this measure. Particularly, the behavior on our buses, things like that. Let me just say that I commend you for leading the charge on this, and I appreciate your work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. And one of the things that Mr. Neal said regarding the question that I posed, there were several questions I could've posed, but the reason I brought that one up was because we could've done this many years before we did do it. But Dr. Holt is the one that brought it to us. And the reality is, the reality is, something meaningful and substantial had to be done regarding the discipline issue in our school district. And you know, if we're just gonna talk, we're just gonna talk and say the way it is, these changes, they're not all sunshine and rainbows. Sometimes they're tough, as Dr. Townsend said. He's got a strong back and it's been heavy lifting to make this work. And you can bet that Dr. Holt hasn't always had smiley conversations with the people that she talks to in the buildings. And I said a year ago, when several people, some of them in the audience tonight, came up and were singing her praises, and I said, that very night, I said, "This is not a popularity contest." I'm sorry, folks. This school district, forty years ago, was the shining example of public education in the state of Michigan. That's the truth. It was absolutely top-notch and everybody knew it. And everybody wanted to work here and they wanted to send their kids here, they couldn't. We didn't have schools of choice then. They had to move into the district to take advantage of this school. The kids of today are no less capable than the kids of forty years ago. So, if we keep having twenty-five minute board meetings where we don't talk about anything and anybody, everybody's all happy all the time, we're gonna keep getting what we always got, and what we always got isn't what we want. And let me tell you who the number one employee is in this district. It's this lady sitting right next to me. And she's got a tough job. And she's held accountable for her job. I'm just here to tell you, if you don't like that, then this isn't the place for you for the next few years because she means to make a difference in this school district. And so does this Board of Education. All of the praises that you sang for Dr. Holt, you were able to sing because we brought her here. I mean, just so you know, okay? So, that doesn't mean that she's got an easy job. This is, she's probably got the toughest job in the city. I think of the other business where the job is tougher than this job. This is a big job. And it comes with big responsibilities and it comes with sleepless nights. And it comes with sometimes, her boss isn't always gonna be happy with her. But it's like you say, we're in this together. Because every day that we wait to do what needs to be done, there's eleven thousand kids in our school district that aren't getting the education that they deserve to have. So, everything you're seeing, the bond issue, and Melody gives her the credit for the bond issue, let me tell you something, Melody did just as much to make that happen as anybody else in the city. Thank you, Melody. For forty years, for forty years, we've been, we've been laying on the backs of our teachers and our administrators, the fact that we didn't have the funding. And make no mistake, we had less funding in this district than any other district around. I know you don't know the financial details of it, but that's the rocks, the rock bottom truth. And as you all know, people who are quality people dedicated to their profession, they seek out the best, the best money. We've got people in this room right here that work for this school district that they stay here in spite of that. They don't stay here because of the money. They stay here in spite of that. So, what do we have to do? We gotta get our kids to quit fighting and sit down and come to school. We've gotta give our administrators and our educators the money that makes them wanna stay in this district so they can take care of their family, so that other talented people that live elsewhere will come here and work with us. We have to do that too, and we're doing that. And I'm afraid, we have to hold everybody accountable. And that means Dr. Holt. Okay? That's, that's the deal. That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna change the way things have been done for forty years in this school district. And we're gonna wear out some tires and maybe we're gonna wear out some feelings from time to time. We're just gonna have to learn, that's the way it's gotta be. We're gonna come together and we're gonna keep going forward. And as Mr. Neal said, if anybody on this Board of Education had any interest in Dr. Holt not being here, we would've had an item on the agenda about an evergreen clause and you didn't see it. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.